Oh, I was like, what is happening here? And then I realized what that was. Whatever makes you feel good.
OCD.
The Lemonster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarolus Insurance Agency at www.decarolusinsuranceagency.com and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.
Yep. Good evening. This is a public hearing of the Legal Affairs Committee. My name is Sue Shalafouzefer, the chairperson of the committee, along with Counselor Robert Tossi to my right and Counselor Pauline Cormier are also members of the committee. This public hearing is on C-94. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an increase of $1,000 for Lemonster School Committee members along with an annual cost of living increase based on the Consumer Price Index. This increase would begin at the start of the next term. So this petition's been on for a little while. We had our first public hearing on 7/14, continued to our last meeting on 7/28 and again this evening. The question, there was some confusion about what the school committee had agreed to in terms of a raise and what the mayor had requested from us. So we did get a response back from the mayor, and I'll read this now, just so people in the public will know what the latest is. So this is a letter dated August 8, 2025, to the City Council members regarding request to amend C-94 increase from $1,000 to $2,000. Dear Members of the City Council, in reference to C-94, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an increase of $1,000 for Lemonster School Committee members along with an annual cost of living increase based on the Consumer Price Index. This increase would begin at the start of the next term. I respectfully request that the amount be amended from $1,000 to $2,000. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact my office anytime. So this is helpful. This really clarifies, I think, once and for all what the request is, and it's close, I think, to what the school committee actually had voted on. So at this point, I will ask my committee members if either of them have any questions or comments about this, about the latest update. Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I don't have any further questions. I think that cleared it up for us and made this a little bit cleaner, so no questions.
Okay, good. Counselor Tossi?
I'm good at this time, I think.
Okay. All right, I'll go to the public. Is there any, well, I'll go to the other councilors. Is there anybody else on the council who has any questions or comments about this? Okay. Seeing none, I'll go to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak either in support of C-94 as potentially amended? We haven't amended this yet, and that will come during our regular meeting. But if there's anybody in the public who would like to speak either in support of C-94 or against C-94, please come to the podium. I'll ask again if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak in support of or in opposition to C-94, please come to the podium. And a third and final time, I will ask if there's anybody who would like to speak about this petition. Seeing nobody in the public wanting to weigh in on this, my recommendation at this point would be to close the public hearing.
Very well. Thank you, Counselor. And we'll take up the next hearing at 6:50.
Yep.
The Lemonster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarolus Insurance Agency at www.decarolusinsuranceagency.com and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.
I don't want to call it income because it's not really income, but any of the money that they make from that, that's not taxable, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
I just wanted to ask a follow-up. So you said you have money in your budget to cover this?
Yes.
Okay. Good to know. Counselor Tossi?
Just hopefully by bringing it up to 1,500, more people, more veterans would get involved.
That's what we're hoping.
Anybody on the council have any questions? Counselor Frida?
Rick, is this going to be allowed for disabled veteran spouses to do the work off as well? Most communities are allowing that?
I'd have to read my letter. I don't know if that's in the law or not, so I'm honestly not sure.
I think it is allowed.
If it's in the law...
I know there are a number of communities that are allowing that.
Yeah. If it's in the law, we certainly will allow it.
It would be a determination by the VSO as to whether the qualifications are there to cover that.
And I'd be happy to approve them up until the 27th of August, which is probably going to be my last day.
Yeah. No, I know, trying to think, Wilburn, I think maybe is one of them. I know there are a number of them that...
Okay. I'll ask my association tomorrow who's adopted that. To be honest, I haven't heard that. I didn't know it was open to them, but I have absolutely no problem.
And it's the same thing with the legal ownership of the house. The spouse has to be part of the ownership. I mean, it's the same.
So what, you know, spouses, widows, surviving spouses, that their husband died of a service-connected death, they don't have any property taxes. So as long as a veteran died of a service-connected death, there's no property taxes. If he was a service-connected veteran and got hit by a bus, unless the VA was driving the bus, you know, they could potentially be eligible for this $1,500, but...
I know when I worked with John Richard to put the senior tax rebate in, probably 15 years ago now, when it first came out, there was a big confusion as to whether it was taxable or not taxable, and then finally determined that it had to be taxed. So because it was originally going to be just, at that time, it was $500. $500 off the taxes, and that would be it. But then the Department of Revenue said, no, you've got to change it. It's got to go through the process of an hourly rate and be taxed. So I would assume it has to be the same way. But I'd be interested if spouses would be allowed, you know, in an extreme case where a veteran can't work.
If it's in the law. And then, I mean, for cases like that, too, we have the Chapter 115 program.
Right.
So the Chapter 115 program is designed specifically to keep seniors, veterans, and their spouses or their widows in their home. So that's, you know, that's Chapter 115. And we went from, at one point, 116 people on Chapter 115 to probably around 50 or 60 right now. So we have, we have money in our budget for that, too.
Good. Just to clarify, Counselor Frida's question, in the material that you submitted, one of the bullet points is must be a veteran or the spouse of a veteran where the veteran is deceased or has a service-connected disability. Must be on the property deed as either owner or trustee of the recorded trust. Be a full-time resident of the property, and then there are a few other things. So I think that answers the question.
Yeah.
The spouse of a disabled is definitely covered.
Thank you.
Any other councils have any questions for Mr. Votor? Okay, good. I'll go to the public now. Would anybody like to speak in favor or in opposition to Communication C-8? For the second time, would anybody like to speak in support of or in opposition to C-8? And for a final time, would anybody like to speak in opposition or support of C-8? Seeing none, we did refer this to the comptroller, and I haven't gotten anything back. So my sense at this point would be to leave the public hearing open.
Okay.
Okay. And when we do hear back from the comptroller, hopefully she'll give us some information on what the process will be, you know, that she'll have that figured out. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. It's 7 o'clock, so we'll open the meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll take a roll call of the councils in attendance, starting with Counselor David Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Ortinger.
Present.
Counselor Noseworthy.
Present.
Counselor Tossi.
Present.
Counselor Shalfozefer.
Present.
Counselor Robbins.
Present.
Counselor Frida.
Present.
I shall be marked as present. All nine councils in attendance. Does the Chairwoman of Records have a report?
I do, Mr. President. The review of the July 14, 2025 minutes is still pending, so I'm going to ask for another date on that. And the July 28, 2025 minutes, some revisions were made today. Those look to be in good order, and I would ask for those to be placed on file.
Any objection? Seeing none, that may be done. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for recess, please.
Second.
Counselor David Cormier, second by Counselor Pauline Cormier, all in favor. Please recognize your usual manner. All right, we're in recess, and Counselor Robbins, you can begin your hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a public hearing on Petition 2-26. Massachusetts Electric Company Doing Businesses, National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., request permission to locate poles and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. 10th Street, National Grid, to install one jointly-owned pole on 10th Street, beginning at a point approximately 360 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Water Street and continuing approximately 15 feet in a northerly direction. Installing a new pole to provide service, 75 10th Street, Lemonster, Mass., location approximately as shown on plan attached. Where is appraised that after due notice and hearing is provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together with the sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may be necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here within marked 10th Street, Lemonster, Massachusetts, number 31126515. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connection with such poles and buildings as each of the said petitioners may desire distributing purposes. I see that we have a representative from National Grid here. If you wouldn't mind coming up to the table. Thank you so much.
Of course.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record.
Lenny Martinez. I live in Worcester, but I'm with National Grid.
Great. Lenny, if you could just give us a quick overview of what you guys are looking to do here, that would be great.
Of course. So we're looking to install Pole 0-50 in front of House 75 on 10th Street to provide the service. We tried to go about it a different way, but the neighbor didn't want to grant an aerial trespass easement, so this is the only way that we can provide them power.
Okay. So this is a new construction, it appears, from my trip over there?
I would assume so. I didn't design this, but I think it is a new construction, yes.
Okay. I'll go to the other members of the committee. Counselor Frida, do you have any questions?
Did the design change? Do you have the new design?
My understanding is the design didn't change since we got this petition.
No, the design has not changed.
Okay. I misunderstood then. Thank you.
Okay. Any other members of the council have questions? I'll go to members of the public. Come on up, sir. If you'd come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Excuse me.
I'm David Carter. I live at 16th Street, which is the house behind where your building. Where was the original plan in place?
What do you mean, sir?
You said it's changed. Did you not say it was changed?
No. No, that was a misunderstanding, sir. There was no change.
Let me clarify. So when you first spoke, you said that you had an original plan that a constituent or a resident wouldn't grant an easement for. That may be what Mr. Carter is referring to?
Right. Yeah, yeah. So I was not the designer that did this. When I spoke with Uh, with the wires, and they did not. So this was like, okay, well, since you cannot, since you won't grant an easement, this is the plan moving forward.
You guys all have the picture that I have?
Yeah.
Considering I'm the neighbor behind them, nobody's ever approached me. And this whole Habitat for Humanity house that went up, originally it was owned by Leominster Housing Authority, which I went down to their office when I bought this property in two thousand seventeen. Nobody ever told me that the house was going up behind there because when I tried to purchase the property, they said it was not developable, is what they said to me back in twenty seventeen. I have no problem with somebody getting a house, and forgive me for my accent, but I'm from Kentucky originally, but I have a problem with somebody saying that the neighbor was not granting access when I'm the only neighbor. There might be somebody next to them on Tenth Street, but that's my house on Ninth Street.
Right, it was, it was that neighbor on Tenth Street.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that's what I have a problem with. So I don't, I don't mind somebody getting help and somebody, you know, doing good for the community, but I'm just, that's why I came here tonight, because I heard the plans were originally something else, which is what you just said.
Okay. So just for clarity purposes, for myself, um, and, um, the, the plan that where you originally wanted to put the power with the easement was the neighbor on Tenth Street?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay. Um, you know, unfortunately, uh, I feel badly that you weren't notified. Unfortunately, what we're here to talk about is getting them power.
No, I, I...
And unfortunate, you know, we can't go back.
I've, I've met the girl that is, is, is going to move in. She's awesome. I, I wish nothing but the best of her, but I was wondering why this was an issue and why it was certified mail.
Um, so any...
Because it shouldn't be an issue with power.
Right, right. So, uh, just via the process, um, all of the, um, telephone poles that get put up in the city have to have approval of the council, and because they have a public hearing, the abutters get notices in case somebody does have an issue with it, so that's why you got a certified notice in the mail?
I'm good then.
Okay? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You too. The plan for the...
Oh, yeah.
That's it? Got any reason?
Do you want to pass one?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yep. Um, the, I don't have the map. I have the abutters map. No, no, I've got that one. I don't have the map of the, um...
A more detailed map of where the pole is being placed.
Yeah, where the poles are going to go. I just have something.
We got the ink dot.
Oh, we got the ink dot.
Oh, it didn't print out properly.
It did not print out.
I can pass it around if you would like.
Thank you. That would be helpful.
Yeah, it's the one at the end. Do any other members of that council have any other questions? Well, this gets circulated around.
So it's getting, it's being put right in front of the new home? Is that right?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay. Anybody else want to see it? Yeah, so it's right here. Okay. Thank you.
Of course, no problem.
While that's circulating around, um, I'll ask for a second time, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of or against this petition? For a third and final time, I'll ask if anybody would like to speak in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, Mr. President, I'll close the public hearing.
Very well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. Per at discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. The first person signed up is Rick Votor, who may have left because of, he already addressed his, uh, issue. Next is Eileen Griffin.
Hi, Eileen Griffin, one thirty-five Highland Ave. Um, I know I've been before you many times around the school committee stipend, and I just wanted to say I'm aware that the, um, mayor has put forth, um, a new, uh, amount, and I'm hoping that that's a nice compromise for folks and that that would be supported, um, by the city council. Um, we appreciate your patience and hearing us keep coming back and forth. Um, I know there was a lot of confusion with a lot of the communications, but hopefully going forward, um, we can, you know, keep this, uh, moving, and, you know, we really want to make this sustainable for not only the folks on the committee, realistically it's for the folks who will be in the committee, you know, down the road, um, and that we don't have to keep coming back and asking, you know, for an increase in the stipend that it will be based, you know, the same way your stipends are based. Um, so we're hoping that you support that. So thank you so much for your patience and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, um, last person formally signed up was the National Grid representative, but I think you're, you're all set, right, Mr. Martinez? So there's no one else signed up, but is any other member of the audience wish to address the city council on an agenda item this evening? And for a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on an agenda item this evening? And a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address us this evening? Seeing none, I'll declare the public forum closed, and we will be back in regular session, starting with communications from the mayor.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the confirmation of Corey Hasselman to the position of Veterans Director for the City of Leominster for a term of three years, effective September second, two thousand twenty-five. I certify that said person is qualified to perform the duties which will be required, and I make this designation slow, slow, solely, excuse me, in the interest of the City of Leominster.
C nine is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, regular course on that. We're going to need to schedule an interview. Um, everybody should have in your packets a copy of, uh, Mr. Hasselman's, um, uh, cover letter and his resume. Um, so I'm going to make a request that we pick a interview date.
Um, my next meeting will be, um, eight twenty-five. Um, I'm going to suggest six thirty. And, um, is that okay with, um, Counselor Oringer?
Yes.
And Counsel, Counsel David Cormier?
Fine with me.
All right. So the, uh, interview will occur on August twenty-fifth at six thirty P.M. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda.
Glenn Eaton, Executive Director, Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, requests to amend the zoning ordinance to replace Article fifteen, accessory apartments with a new Article fifteen that complies with the recently passed state law and make other changes to implement the new ordinance.
Uh, Petition three twenty-six is referred to the Chairwoman of Legal Affairs.
Mm-hmm. Um, three twenty-six should be given regular course with referrals to the Planning Board and Copman and Page, Ko, Ko, KP Law, excuse me. Um, and I will be setting up a, um, subcommittee to review this, so I'll let everybody know. I'll check with my committee and then get the word out.
Did you want this on the next agenda, or do you want to skip one ahead?
I'm going to skip one.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, right.
I think it makes sense to go into September.
All right. So our first meeting is September, let's take a look, is September the eighth. So nine, eight, why don't we say at, um, six thirty? Uh, I'll check with members of your committee. Counselor Tossi?
I agree.
And Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Um, you heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give three twenty-six further time with referrals to the Planning Board and the co...
KP Law.
KP Law. Um, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, oh, Counsel Frida?
Yeah, through the chair, to the chairperson. Um, can you just find out, in reference to three twenty-three and four twenty, I mean, twenty-six, four twenty-six, why we have, um, MRPC doing iZoning? We have a planning director?
Certainly.
Okay. That's a question you're going to direct, uh, you'll, you'll follow up on?
Absolutely. I'll follow up either through the clerk board directly.
Okay. All right. Very well. Thank you. So the recommendation is regular course with a, um, public hearing of nine to eight at six thirty P.M. All in favor? Please recognize your usual manner? All right, so that will be established. Moving on to four twenty-six.
Glenn Eaton, Executive Director of the Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, requests to amend the zoning ordinance to add the MFOD, multi-family overlay district, to the abbreviations table for overlay districts and Article three.
Uh, four dash twenty-six is referred to the Chairwoman of Legal Affairs.
Mm-hmm. Uh, four twenty-six should be given regular course with referral to KP Law.
Okay, uh, that may be done.
Mm-hmm. And public, I'm sorry, we need a public hearing on that, too.
Um, that one is kind of, uh, it's like a relatively minor matter, I think, just something that was omitted from the definitional section. Um, MFOD is all over the MBTA's zoning act, but there's no formal definition for it. Stands for multi-family overlay district, but, uh, are you okay with setting that up for the next meeting?
Yeah, I am, actually.
All right. So we'll put that on, um...
Eight twenty-eight.
Eight twenty-five at, uh, let's do that one at six thirty-five.
Yep.
All, all those in favor of, um, regular course in a public hearing, uh, on four twenty-six on, at eight twenty-five at six thirty-five P.M., please recognize your usual manner? Okay, that may be done. Uh, moving on to five dash twenty-six.
Joe Pendolfo, on behalf of Golden Nozzle Car Wash and Nerea Energy, four sixty-eight Main Street, Leominster, Mass., requests a petition to obtain an underground fuel storage license for a total of three one-thousand-gallon underground storage tanks for heating at the Golden Nozzle Car Wash located at four sixty-eight Main Street. We were unable to obtain a natural gas service from National Grid due to a street opening mor...
Moratorium.
Sorry for that. A moratorium placed on Main Street by the State of Massachusetts. The state will not allow us to ex, excavate or disturb the existing asphalt paving on Main Street. Therefore, we are forced to switch our fuel source to propane. Eastern Propane has been contacted to supply the underground storage tanks. The City of Leominster Fire Department Deputy Chief Ryan Young has, excuse me, has granted a two-thousand-gallon permit for underground storage. The Fire Department has all sole, allowed Eastern Propane to set an additional underground one-thousand-gallon tank on the site of the condition that we obtain the three-thousand-gallon underground propane storage permit. We have attached a copy of the agreement from the Fire Department, along with a plan showing the location of the three tanks.
Um, Petition five dash twenty-six is referred to the Chairwoman of Legal Affairs.
Yes, uh, five dash twenty-six should be given regular course with referrals to the Leominster Fire Department, and this does require a public hearing.
Right.
And, um, I'd like to request that Deputy Chief Ryan Young attend that public hearing and the chief, if, if, you know, it's appropriate as well. I was, there's a little, I was a little confused about the timeline, um, because the, the agreement that was signed by the Fire Department and the owners, the landowners, it's not dated. So I don't know when this would happen, but in any case, we can get to that, the bottom of that at the, uh, public hearing.
Okay, um, next meeting for that, too?
I think so.
All right. So, um, I'm going to recommend eight twenty-five at six thirty-six P.M. for that. Counselor Tossi?
I agree.
And Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Um, all those in favor of establishing that public hearing on five twenty-six at six thirty-six P.M., please indicate your usual, you have something?
Just a quick question. Is it only going to take a minute for...
No.
No. Okay.
So...
So we're just allowing a minute in between?
No. We can start later, we can't start earlier. So we've seen the effect of that tonight, so it, it's not going to be a problem either way. Do it all the time. All right, anything else? You finished? Are you finished? Are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay.
Makes no sense, but it's all set. Yep.
Um, all those in favor, please recognize your usual manner? All right, so that may be done. Moving on to six dash twenty-six.
David R. Cormier, Ward Three Counselor, requests to place a streetlight on the telephone pole located in front, six nine nine Willard Street.
Six twenty-six is referred to the Chair, um, I don't even know who Public Safety is. I'm sorry. Chairwoman of Public Safety.
That's okay. Uh, six twenty-six should be given regular course with referrals, uh, to the Leominster Police Department Traffic Division and the DPW, and we also need to schedule a public hearing.
Okay. Um, Counselor Nosworthy? Um, I want to suggest, um, eight twenty-five at, let's go with six thirty-seven. Follow the, the, uh, pattern. Okay with that, Counselor Nosworthy?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, Counsel Frida, you're the third member. Okay with that? You all set with that?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, all those in favor, please recognize your usual manner? All right, that may be done. And moving on to seven dash twenty-six.
Carrie Nosworthy, Ward Five Counselor, requests the installation of a four-way stop at the intersection of Abbott Ave. and Lindell Avenue to address ongoing safety concerns.
Um, seven twenty-six is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Safety.
Mm-hmm. Uh, seven dash twenty-six should be given regular course with referrals to the Leominster Police Department Traffic Division and the DPW.
All right.
And public hearing.
All right, well, we'll do that one at eight twenty-five, uh, at six thirty-eight. Uh, Counselor Nosworthy, okay with that?
Yes.
Counsel Frida? Okay, all those in favor, establishing that public hearing, those referrals at six thirty-eight, please recognize your usual manner? Okay. Moving on to matters before the city council and the financial report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We begin the fiscal year on July first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, the opioid stabilization fund had five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents in it. Uh, to date, we have spent eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and six cents, which leaves us a balance of four hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. The capital stabilization fund began on July first with a balance of four million, five hundred ninety-three thousand, one hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-two cents. Um, pending a, um, positive vote tonight on C dash seven, we will have spent two million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars, and that will leave us with a balance of two million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, one dollar and sixty-two cents. And the stabilization fund for the City of Leominster began with a balance on July 1st, 2025, with $24,086,485.59. To date, we have spent $11,105,000. And that leaves us with a balance of $22,981,485.59. And that is the financial report.
Any questions? Councilor Schalfo-Zephyr?
You know, it's not really a question. It's just a comment. When you add the stabilization account, the capital stabilization account, I think it's really important for people in the public to know, the city has cash in these stabilization accounts of over $25 million. That doesn't include the opioid account, which is a separate complete thing that is very specifically targeted for certain expenses. And we will be getting free cash from this fiscal year that just closed on July 31st, certified sometime in the early fall, I would imagine. So I just want to make it clear, you know, to the public that the city's reserves are quite healthy.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Anybody else? All right. Moving on to C-7. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-7, Dean J. Mazarella Mayor, requests an appropriation of $2261,190 be made to the general fund capital accounts listed below. Same to be transferred from the capital stabilization account. These funds are needed to fund the fiscal year 2025 capital requests from various departments. Please see the list below and attached documentation. Number 154, institutional technology, $100,000. Number 192, building maintenance, $425,000. Number 210, police department, $526,690. Number 215, public safety communications, $150,000. Number 220, fire department, $154,500. Number 245, wire department, $50,000. Number 294, forestry, $95,000. Number 221, highway department, $415,000. Number 491, cemetery department, $50,000. Number 610, library, $250,000. Number 630, recreation department, $45,000, for a total request of $2261,190. We did have a subcommittee meeting last Monday night, August 4th. We had an explanation here by many department heads on all of these expenditures. Personally, I find them all very worthwhile. And we did not come up with a recommendation because Council Cormier could not be here that evening. So it would be my recommendation that we grant C-77. And I'll ask that you check with members of my committee, Mr. President.
Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Council Tassi?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-7. Is there any further discussion? Council Frida?
Yeah, just want to commend the Finance Chair. This is something that I've been pushing for, for a long time, to have subcommittee meetings, spending over $2 million, a taxpayer dollars. And it was an excellent subcommittee meeting with all the department heads and the mayor with a slide presentation on what's been done and what the future will be. So I think it was just an excellent meeting, so thought that was very good.
Council Cormier?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I also, you know, wanted to point out, like I had mentioned to the mayor during the subcommittee meeting, you know, as a city, we should be very proud of the fact that some of the things, some of these improvements, we are paying cash for these things. You know, it was mentioned at that meeting, if you look at sheets that we had received earlier in the year, other communities and the Commonwealth that are going out to bond and debt exclusions for, some of them just to run general government. And, you know, here we are paying for all these things cash. It's the envy of a lot of communities across the state if they knew how we were doing business here. So I think we all should be proud that this is how we do business because it saves a lot of money in the long run by paying cash for all these things upfront. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor of granting C-7, please recognize usual manner? All right. C-7 has been granted by a vote of nine to zero. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $2261,190 be made to the general fund capital accounts listed. Same to be transferred from the capital stabilization account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
And when opposed, the order is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to Legal Affairs and C-94.
C-94, Dean J. Mazarella Mayor, request an annual, request, excuse me, an increase of $1,000 for Leominster School Committee members along with an annual cost of living increase based on the Consumer Price Index. This increase would begin at the start of next term. So we did get a letter from the mayor, and I am going to read this because we do need to amend C-94. This letter is dated August 8th, 2025, to City Council members regarding request to amend C-94, increase from $1,000 to $2,000. Dear members of the City Council, in reference to C-94, Dean J. Mazarella Mayor, request an increase of $1,000 for Leominster School Committee members along with an annual cost of living increase based on the Consumer Price Index. This increase would begin at the start of next term. I respectfully request that the amount be amended from $1,000 to $2,000. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact my office anytime. Sincerely, Dean J. Mazarella. So my recommendation would be to amend the petition and grant the amended dollar amount, the $2,000. So I would ask that you check with my committee.
All right. Well, why don't we, why don't we circulate a motion to amend? You want to move that? Council Robbins, have a second on that?
If I could. Can I just, can I have discussion about the, well--
We have a motion on the floor, Council.
Yep.
We have a second on the motion. Council Schalfo-Zephyr? Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah.
Council Cormier?
If I could, I just want to make sure that we're being clear, that we're putting this to $4,000 effective in January 2026.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it'd be worthwhile to, if we're going to do this the way, the way ours states. Council Nicollet put in this petition, I think, back in, I don't know, the maybe 2007, I'm seeing. I don't know if we want to include the following language to say that--
That goes to the issue itself, but right now we're on the amendment.
Okay.
So hold that for the, after the amendment. So any other discussion on the amendment? I'm going to do this by roll call, starting with Council David Cormier.
Yea.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Council Oringer.
Yea.
Council Nosworthy.
Yea.
Council Tassi.
Yea.
Council Schalfo-Zephyr.
Yea.
Council Robbins.
Yea.
Council Frida.
Yea.
I shall be recorded as yea. So the motion, the amendment has passed. Now, you want me to poll your committee and then we'll open up the discussion. So Council Tassi? You in favor of the, the recommendation is--
I agree.
All right. Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Now discussion. Council Cormier?
Yeah, thank you. I don't know if we want to add the language that's on, in 16-2 of our ordinance that states the following, that it's established in January 2026 to be set at $4,000. And then with the, it's going to be, and then each subsequent year, it's going to change with the Consumer Price Index of the previous calendar year with a minimum of no increase and a maximum increase of 5%. That's what ours says. I don't know if we want to adopt that language in this as well, but that's what, that's how ours was done, too.
All right. So maybe you want to move that we adopt the COLA consistent with the City Council COLA? How's that?
Sure. Consistent with the language in 16-2, which is the way both the mayor and the city councils states.
Just a point--
Council Schalfo-Zephyr?
I guess just a point of order. We did amend the amount based on the communication from the person asking for the increased amount.
Right.
So I didn't have any problem with that amendment. That language is not included in this communication.
But he, but he does suggest, the mayor does suggest a COLA.
Absolutely. Absolutely. It's tied to the, it's tied to annual cost of living, yes, just like ours is, that the other part is not included in that. Maybe we could add that separately? I mean, I don't know. I don't, I'm not comfortable necessarily amending the mayor's communication further without him asking for it.
I can't imagine that's going to be an issue, but, I mean, we've been lussing around with this for a long time. I mean, we, all we're doing is supplying additional language. I mean--
How about I make the--
It's got to go, it's got to go through two readings.
Yeah.
So--
How about I make the motion? We get a second and have a vote on it? I mean, that's--
Yeah, okay. If you want to, you want to move that?
Yeah, so that's my motion, that we adopt, we set this at $4,000 in January 2026, and then each subsequent year, it rises with the Consumer Price Index based on the language that mirrors 16-2 of our witnesses.
Okay. You have a second on that, somebody?
I'll second.
Okay. Pauline? Any further discussion? All right. By roll call, Council David Cormier?
Yea.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Council Oringer?
Yea.
Council Nosworthy?
Yea.
Council Tassi?
Yea.
Council Schalfo-Zephyr?
Yea.
Council Robbins?
Yea.
Council Frida?
Yea.
I'll be recorded as yea. All right. So we have the, we now have it teed up as a $4,000 salary starting in January, or stipend starting in January of '26 with a COLA consistent with 16.2. Any more discussion on what we have now? Yes.
Just to clarify, so that language is consistent with City Council and the mayor's?
Correct. Correct.
Perfect.
Yep. Anything else? All right. So now we're going to vote on the amended communication proper, all right? Starting with Council David Cormier?
Yea.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Council Oringer?
Yea.
Council Nosworthy?
Yea.
Council Tassi?
Yea.
Council Schalfo-Zephyr?
Yea.
Council Robbins?
Yea.
Council Frida?
Yea.
I shall be recorded as yea. By a vote of nine to zero, the amended communication has passed. All right. Moving on to C-8.
C-8, Dean J. Mazarella Mayor, requests that the City Council vote to approve the attached Veterans Tax Work Off Program. We had a public hearing earlier this evening. We heard from Mr. Votor about the program. It makes a lot of sense to me. My only concern at this point is that we did not get a referral back from the Comptroller. I know that Mr. Votor said it's in the Veterans Budget, which is a good thing, but in terms of the mechanics and how it works, you know, as an offset to a natural property tax bill as opposed to a check, I would, I, my feeling at this point is to give it further time and get a referral back from the Comptroller. And I would ask that you poll my committee.
Fair enough. Council Tassi?
Yes, we can.
All right. Council Pauline Cormier?
Yeah, I think that's a perfect solution.
Okay.
All right. So the recommendation of Legal Affairs is to continue the public hearing on C-8. I'm going to say August 25th at 6:25 PM and further time, as well as a continued public hearing. Any further discussion on that? Council Frida?
Yeah, I'm going to go along with further time, but I really think we've got to pass this tonight. This is, it's exactly, according to DOR, it's all set up exactly the way the senior rebate program works. They work hand in hand. So the, you know, through the Controller's Office, it would be the same thing. I mean, I'm sure there's a reason she hasn't contacted us, but, you know, I think we could have, we could have passed it and get into the readings if there was an issue with it. But, I mean, it's, we've had it in the city for, you know, 15 years probably, if, at least. And this is no different. So I just don't see why we have to, we have to hold this up. But I'll go along with further time if there is the need to get an answer.
Okay. Anybody else? Council Schalfo-Zephyr?
I think that there were questions raised because I think, my understanding was that for the senior program, they actually receive a check. And Mr. Votor was explaining that this program, he really wanted it to be an offset off of a person's tax bill. So I think that's what I'm waiting for from the Comptroller. He's got the money in his budget, so it's not a financial question, but it's more okay, is this going to work the way that Mr. Votor was hoping that it would? So that's what I'm waiting for, I think.
Well, I will say this. I remember an issue with a woman in the senior program that was getting a check and didn't want it. There was some haggling about that. I don't remember the exact details, but I understand what Council Frida is suggesting. We want to get this off the--
It's very clear with DOR. You have to do with DOR until you can do with it, so.
I think we could give it one more meeting, I suppose. Okay. Council Nosworthy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through the Chair, to the Chair. I agree. And as a veteran myself, I absolutely would, you know, love to pass this, but I do think it's important that we clarify things so for the veterans and the people impacted, there's no unintended headaches. So I'm in agreement.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor of continuing the public hearing to 8:25 at 6:25 PM and further time, please recognize usual manner? All right. So that may be done. Moving on to Public Service, is the Chairman ready to report?
I will be abstaining, Mr. President.
Very well. Thank you, Council Cormier.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is 2-26, Massachusetts Electric Company Doing Business as National Grid in Verizon, New England, Inc., requests permission to locate poles and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. 10th Street, National Grid, to install one jointly owned pole on 10th Street, beginning at a point approximately 360 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Water Street and continuing approximately 15 feet in a northerly direction. Installing a new pole to provide service to 75 10th Street, Leominster, Mass. We had a public hearing earlier this evening, and a representative from National Grid was here and explained, as the petition does, that this is to provide service to a house that's being built at 75 10th Street. So I would grant this petition and ask that you check with the other members of my committee.
Okay. Council Frida?
I agree.
And Council Nosworthy?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant 2-26. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 2-26, please recognize usual manner. 2-26 is granted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to new business and first reading of an ordinance. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I am. This is formally petition 1-26. Ward Two Counsel Pauline Cormier and at-large Counsel Brandon Robbins request to move pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 89, Section 9, and Leominster Municipal Code Ordinances, Section 13-79, yield signs designated mechanic street, southwesterly across the street from the most southerly point of the mechanic street, Delta Island, as a yield street be amended to a full stop sign and designated as a stop street as defined by and pursuant to Section 13-77. So we do have the ordinance language in the year 2025, and ordinance be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Amending Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Section 13-79 of the revised ordinances entitled Yield Signs is hereby amended by deleting the following text in its entirety. Mechanic Street, southwesterly across the street from the most southerly point of the Mechanic Street, Delta Island. And Chapter 13 is further amended in Section 13-77 Stop Signs by inserting the following. Mechanic Street, southwesterly across the street from the most southerly point of the Mechanic Street, Delta Island. My recommendation would be that we adopt the first reading.
Thank you. Council Tassi?
I agree.
And Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the first reading of formally 1-26. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Council David Cormier?
Yea.